We are now.
Great, thank you. Well, thanks everyone for being here. I'm going to go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is May 3rd at 10:00 a.m. We have three items on the agenda today. First up at 10:00, we have number VAR 23001. A request for approval of a zoning variance from the minimum design requirements for a short subdivision. Under Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1656060C and D. To allow for a reduction of the required minimum access corridor width and minimum turning radius for a dead end access corridor. That would be associated with a four unit common wall residential structure located at 768 Point Brown Avenue Southeast. Which would be subdivided to facilitate individual lot ownership pursuant to a conditional use permit that I previously approved. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center, whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony. To determine whether the proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a zoning variance. Under OSMC 1752030. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These include the application and project plans, the staff report prepared by city staff. Notice materials and a comment from the Ocean Shores Fire Department. And I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under author affirmation. Because were my decision to be appealed, the recording of today's hearing. Along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying. I am not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal. So that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe will be following today, is first we'll hear from city staff. Who will provide an overview of the proposal along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant and see if there's any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public. Should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify. And finally, following any such public testimony, we will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. So I think with that, we can get started. Mr. Reed, let's get you sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please state and spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role at the city?
Yeah, my name is Marshall Reed, spelled M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L, last name Reed, R-E-A-D. And I serve as the lead planner for the City of Ocean Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I would review in advance of this hearing?
Yes, it did.
And were there any additional exhibits or public comments submitted before the hearing?
There were not.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
Okay, I'm going to start out with the staff report. This project is a continuation of the Tumber. Commonwealth subdivision project that we started a few months back. One of the, the things that has come up in the short subdivision code is a requirement for a. Twenty foot wide corridor with a, a dead end radius of not less than 30 feet. Which is in conflict with the regular driveway requirements had this not been a Commonwealth subdivision type project. So, the code, the purpose is, we're looking at an application for a variance to waive the minimum design standard requirements for a short subdivision. Found in Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1656060C and D. C indicates that if a corridor access is permitted. The minimum corridor width shall not be less than 20 feet. No portion of the corridor shall be used to satisfy building setbacks as specified in the zoning ordinance. And D, the dead end corridor shall have a circular turnaround at the corridor end. And the circular end shall have a turning radius of not less than 30 feet. Now, the applicant in this matter is Tara Tumber. Residing in Seattle, Washington. The project description is Tara Tumber. Legal description, Division 14, Lot 82, and that's located at 768 Point Brown Avenue Southeast. The overall project is a four unit common wall residential structure that's proposed to be subdivided to allow for individual ownership of the units. It's a multi-family structure, approximately 6,650 square feet of living space. And for the record, the configuration on this structure is in a horseshoe shape, which. Which is what's necessitating the access. Existing conditions, the zoning is R5. It's a five-plex, six-plex zone. Land use, multi-family, medium density. Surrounding conditions. To the north, we have an R5, five-plex and six-plex. To the south, R5, five-plex and six-plex. And these are the zoning designations. To the east is R1, single family, and to the west, R3, triplex. The land use designation for each of these areas, to the north, moderate density, to the south, moderate density, to the east, single family, to the west, moderate density. The existing land uses as built, single family residence developed to the north. To the south is a single family residence developed. To the east is the Grand Canal, and to the west. Is a single family residence and a vacant undeveloped properties. The background, the property is located in the southeast quadrant of Ocean Shores in a multi-use division surrounded by a mixture of residential, single family occupancy uses. Triplex uses, multi-family uses, and undeveloped lots. There are several other multi-family residential structures in the immediate area. We provided notice of this public hearing for variance 23-001 scheduled for today. To the owners within 300 feet of the subject property on April 20th, 2023, as required by the code. The staff analysis dimensional requirements of Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1656060 require that the corridor as a short subdivision. Include a minimum width of 20 feet with no portion used to satisfy setbacks and dead end corridors requiring a 30-foot radius circular turnaround at the end. International Fire Code 503.2.5 calls for access to within 150 feet of the structure. The entire parcel is only 150 feet in length. And with the structural setback from the buffer, a maximum distance to the rear of the structure is 115 feet, well short of 150-foot maximum. The Ocean Shores Municipal Code 175160. Requires that every building here and after erected or moved shall be in a lot adjacent to a public street or with access by private street. And all structures shall be located on lots so as to provide safe, convenient access for servicing. Fire protection and required off-street parking. And we went through those requirements for parking in the conditional use hearing. And the, the project is proposed to be compliant with that section of code. The standard of review for a variance, the hearing examiner shall have the authority to grant a variance from provisions of the title, subject to the following provisions. Any variance granted shall be subject to such conditions as will assure that the variance does not constitute a grant of special privilege. Inconsistent with the limitation on other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is located. The criteria for consideration of a variance, before the variance is granted, the hearing examiner shall determine. That because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography. Location or surroundings, the strict application of this title is bound to deprive the subject property of rights. And privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under identical zone classifications. The granting of the variance shall not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to property or improvements in the vicinity and zone. In which the property is situated. Analysis based on the narrative provided by the proponent of the very, proponent of the variance as a part of the application. If, if this property were not being subdivided, a variance would not be necessary. So there appears to be. A deviation in code between a standard development of a multi-family structure. In which a, an access corridor meeting the requirements of. Chapter 16 would not be necessary had this property not been chosen to be subdivided. Should the hearing examiner approve the variance, the planning department recommends conditions as listed, in addition to any conditions imposed by the hearing examiner. Condition number one would be to provide access and parking easements on all four parcels. That would allow unrestricted access to the driving surfaces on each parcel. In addition to the additional parking that is associated with lots identified as lots A and D. And also to, condition number two would to place a fire lane, no parking sign at the entrance to the access corridor. And that would conclude my staff report. I apologize for the phone. We'll get rid of that.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'm very familiar with this project and property from the previous CUP hearing that we held. I've just got a few questions for you. So. And I recall at the previous hearing, I had some questions about the. Emergency fire access for these, for this proposed structure. So am I correct in understand, I, I understand that we're, the applicant seeking a variance from these specific. Minimum requirements for subdivisions, but, and I'm just trying to make sense of the, the code in this respect. The. The structure would still be required to provide safe access for emergency fire vehicles under that other code provision you mentioned. I believe it was. 175160?
Correct.
But it's more general in nature. It doesn't lay out specific access width or anything.
That's correct.
Okay, so, and then, so turning to the specific variance requests. The applicant is first requesting a variance from that requirement for a minimum 20-foot corridor width. I'm looking at the project plans and. The applicant proposes a 16-foot wide driveway. And there would be a total of 18 feet between units A and D at the narrowest point. Can you tell, is this additional two feet of width included as part of the corridor width? In other words, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if the applicant's requesting to reduce the minimum corridor width to 18 feet or 16 feet.
Well, the, 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 the driving surface would be, excuse me, the driving surface. Would be 16 feet with an additional two feet of space on either side of the driving surface for a total of 18 feet. Is that, is that the question?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess my question is if. This driveway was 18 feet, but there was a total of 20 feet between the, the structures, would. The variance be required? I'm just trying to figure out what the corridor width includes, if that's just the paved area or the entire area.
The 18 feet would be the total width of the corridor.
Okay.
Well, based on we, because the, the Ocean Shores Municipal Code in the, in the access portion doesn't designate a specific distance. For, for access or a specific width. My research has. And this is talking to, you know, staff members in various departments and contractors that have been putting in access roads. And driveways in Ocean Shores over the years, and a 16-foot driveway is a standard driveway. And so, this, this proposal meets that minimum of 16. I believe that the, that the variance is required because the, the subdivision code requires greater than what is, what would normally be. Considered as adequate. And that was supported by the, the fire marshal in his letter. Indicating that provided that the, that the apparatus could get within 150 feet. That it wouldn't require a, a full access road width. Up, up to the structure.
Okay, I, I understand. I think I understand that. I guess I was just trying to understand whether the. The width would be reduced by two feet or four feet. I guess it depends on if you view. That outside paved area is part of the corridor width. I just want to be clear in my decision.
It can be used as total width, but.
Okay.
We're looking at a driving service, surface of 18 feet, and I wouldn't, I would be asking for 18 feet. As opposed to 20.
I see. Perfect.
What are we total with? Are we 16 total in the driveway? Yeah, no, we're asking for 16 feet of total driving width. So that's just the additional two feet, one foot on either side would be just additional space that would be available.
Okay, I, I think I understand, Mr. Reed. And then the, the, the second component of the request is to. Relates to that minimum 30-foot turning radius for a dead end corridor. And then, I believe, based on the applicant's materials, that there would be a parking aisle at the end of this corridor. That would be only 32 feet wide, and therefore only have a 16-foot turning radius.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then, so I reviewed that letter from the Ocean Shores Fire Department, and it. Appears to me they, they have no concerns about the lack of the. Turning radius because of the short length of this driveway. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
In other words, emergency fire, fire vehicles could easily pull in and pull out of that. Driveway.
So it was explained to me that if they had to initiate a fire attack on this building. They would not pull into that corridor. They would pull up to the face of the building. And, and because the building is not more than 150 feet, that they would, they would consider that adequate access to be able to mount an attack all the way around the building.
Okay. Think I under, so they, so the, the fire department reviewed this and they, they have no issues with this proposed design. Is that correct?
Yeah, they do not.
Okay, and then let me just look at the conditions here that you've recommended. And the, these conditions are designed to ensure that with this variance, there would still be safe. Access to the units. Should there be a, so no, no cars could block this driveway that. Allowing the, the fire department to access the building if necessary.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the concern was more on response for an aid call where you would have an ambulance backing up to the corridor. Still, they indicated that they probably wouldn't access to the internal of the corridor. They would probably back up to the entrance. And run a gurney into any of the individual units that required servicing. And then bring that patient out to the face.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Reed. And just finally, because I always ask, has the comprehensive plan or critical areas ordinance been amended? Since the application was deemed complete in a manner that would impact this proposal?
No, it has not.
Great. And do you have any other members of city staff that would like to testify before I move to the applicant?
At this time.
Great. And then who do we have here for the applicant?
We have Kim Hammond representing the applicant and the applicant himself, Tara Tumber.
Okay, Ms. Hammond, would you, would you like to present some testimony here today? Or the applicant, however you want to do it.
I feel like it was covered pretty well.
Okay, can I just, can I swear you in? I just have one question for you. Okay, do you swear affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
And did you get a chance to review the conditions recommended by city staff?
Sure did.
And do you have any issues with those conditions?
No, no issues.
Great, well, I don't have any further questions for you. Mr. Reed, you know, is there any members of the public in the room that would like to testify today?
We, we do have members of the public. Would anybody like to testify in this matter today? Nobody, nobody wishing to testify.
Okay, let's turn to. Who we have remotely on here. I see a rod. Would you like to testify here today?
No, I, I'm, well, I'm the architect of the project, but I think the, the city. Did a very good job on, on the presentation, so I think, I think we're good.
Okay, great. And then I have Andrew Novian, if I'm saying that correctly.
That's close enough. Yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly satisfied.
Great, thank you. And then I see one more member of the public or someone on, on Zoom, L-I-N-N-B. You're on mute. If you would like to testify now is your opportunity. I'm not getting a response, so I'm going to assume this person doesn't want to testify, so. I guess we can just turn back to Mr. Reed. Do you have anything, any last thoughts on behalf of the city?
No, I don't think I can add anything to this.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this first matter. I want to thank everyone for participating today, and I expect to issue a decision within 10 working days. We have two additional matters scheduled. You are on mute?
Yep, we are ready.
And it appears that we're recording. Great, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner back to order. For the record, today is May 2nd, 2023 at 10:30 a.m. We have two additional items on the agenda today, numbers CUP 23001 and OO2. Both of which involve requests for approval of a conditional use permit. To allow for the construction of a three-unit common wall residential structure. On approximately 10,000 square foot lots, respectively located at 611 and 615 Sunset Avenue Northeast. Which would be subdivided to allow for individual unit ownership. Regarding these matters, I reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing, which include the application and project plans. The staff report prepared by city staff and notice materials. And I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits that they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will address admitting additional exhibits at that time. With that, I think we can start on these matters. Mr. Reed, you're already sworn in, but can you please go ahead and state and spell your name again for the audio recording and explain your role at the city?
Yeah, sure. My name is Marshall Reed, spelled M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L. Last name is Reed, R-E-A-D. And I am serving as the lead planner for the City of Ocean Shores in this matter.
Thank you. And did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review today in advance of the hearing?
Yeah, I did, but the date that you gave for the hearing, you stated May 2nd, and I want to clarify, today is May 3rd.
Thank you, yes, May 3rd.
All right.
Great.
My week is going to.
Before you begin your presentation. It appears that these two applications are proposing nearly identical projects on, on adjacent lots. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
And it's, this is the same, the same applicant for both projects, but different property owners? Is that, do I have that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, would it make sense to you to present a single, like, comprehensive presentation of both applications and. Just clarify any differences between the proposals, or do you want to do this one at a time? I'm okay either way.
No, it makes total sense in the interest of time to present both at the same time.
Sure. And does the applicant have any issue proceeding in that manner?
You guys okay with that? Yeah, it's agreeable.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Reed. You can proceed.
Okay, so the City of Ocean Shores received application on. March 9th. 2023 for a conditional use permit. For the ability to subdivide their piece of property into three separate properties under the Commonwealth subdivision of the Ocean Shores Municipal Code. The purpose, the application is for a conditional use of a multi-family, high-density zone property. For the purpose of building a three-unit common wall residential structure and then subdividing the property for individual ownership. The applicant today is Larry Butler. He's serving to represent Z Brothers LLC. On one piece of property and P C Construction LLC on the adjacent piece of property. I will run down the address for each property and, and give the. The building footprint and percentage of lot coverage for each. Starting out with the first one, CUP 23-001, covering. Division 24, Block 12, Lot 24, which is 615 Sunset Avenue Northeast. Lot A is going to have an 800-square-foot building footprint covering 22.7% of the lot. 801. Excuse me, the second building, Lot B, is going to have 801 square feet of building footprint covering 27% of that lot. And the Lot C, the third section of that structure, will have 801 square feet covering 22.6% of the parcel. So that's well under the 40% maximum allowed by code. The existing conditions, the zoning is an R5, five-plex and six-plex, multi-family, medium-density zone properties. This is the same for both properties. The surrounding conditions to the north is R5-plex and six-plex, to the south, R5-plex. Excuse me, R5, five-plex and six-plex. To the east and west of these parcels are zoned R1, single family in both cases. The land use designation. For both properties and proposals, to the north would be multi-family, medium-density, to the south, multi-family, medium-density. To the east and west, respectively, single family on both. The existing land uses for these parcels to the north. Of. The first one, 615 Sunset Avenue. To the north of that would be a multi-family structure, to the south, active construction of a multi-family structure. To the east is a vacant undeveloped lot, and to the west is a single family residence. We move to 611 Sunset Avenue. And to the north of that is active construction of a multi-family structure. To the south is a vacant undeveloped lot, and to the east is a single family structure, and to the west, a vacant undeveloped lot. The background, this property is located in the northeast corner of Ocean Shores in a multi-use division surrounded by a mixture of residential, single-family occupancy uses. Multi-family uses and undeveloped lots. There are several other multi-family structures and single-family residential structures in the immediate area. To Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title 1724030C. Notices of this public hearing were sent out to the 300-foot radius around these properties Wednesday, May 3rd. Or for today's hearing, Wednesday, May 3rd, on April 20th, 2023, as required by Ocean Shores Municipal Code. Individuals were invited to appear and testify in this hearing. Staff analysis, staff has determined that the development, the development project is listed as a conditional use for this zoning district. Chapter 20, 24 of Title 17. Conditional uses, Section 1724030C indicates roh. Indicates Row House and other common wall residential developments. The subject property is located in an R five zone, multifamily dwellings are permitted in this zone with a maximum density of one unit for every twenty one hundred square feet of lot size. Seventeen twenty four oh fifty density regulations indicate two and two family and multifamily dwellings should have a minimum lot size. Of two thousand one hundred square feet per dwelling per dwelling unit. The property in both cases, let me confirm the other lot. I believe they both contain ten thousand square feet, but I want to read that. Yep, so both properties contain ten thousand square feet. As such, up to four dwelling units would be allowed as a permitted use. Under that density. Without question, the proposed building can be approved as a permitted use. The subject of this application is whether the land may be subdivided. So the individual lots and homes may be individually owned as opposed to being rented out to tenants. The standard of review seventeen fifty two oh fifty criteria for consideration of a conditional use. Before any conditional use permit is granted, the hearing examiner must determine the following. Is the use applied for either conditional? Is listed in the conditional uses allowed in the district, or is it significantly similar? To one or more of the listed uses. In this case, it is listed specifically as a conditional use. Also, approval of the permit will be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district. And applicable to provisions of the comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect other uses and properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting the permit does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district and no loose, excuse me, no nuisance to life limb or property will develop as a result. The analysis, the applied use for is specifically listed as a conditional use. The following uses are allowed in the R five zone upon approval of a conditional use permit in accordance with the provisions of sections seventeen fifty two or forty. Through fifty two oh eighty. And specifically for this project, Row House under C Row House and other common wall residential developments. Where the underlying land is subdivided to allow ownership of the individual lot at home. Because the proposed three unit multifamily dwelling is a permitted use under the zone. It is evident that the building would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district. And applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect other uses of properties in the immediate vicinity. The question is then whether subdividing the land into individual lots would also be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and the comprehensive plan. The district is intended for moderate, single family and multifamily dwellings in order to assure adequate light, air, open space and privacy. In the protection of property values while providing affordable housing in the community. Where the proposed use would allow for individual units to be sold to home buyers. The the application appears consistent with the purpose of the district. The twenty fourteen comprehensive plan lists the city's housing goals and policies among which are under H two dot one. Encourage and promote a wide range of residential development types and densities in various parts of the city. To meet the needs of a diverse population and provide affordable housing choices for all income levels. And H two dot four encourage multifamily housing in areas designated for such uses. The city's twenty twenty draft comprehensive plan, which has been adopted. Has slightly different language, but under housing policy number eight, encourage and promote a wide range of residential development types and densities. In various parts of the city to meet the needs of a diverse population and provide for a variety of housing choices. Again, because the proposed use would allow for units to be sold to individual home buyers. The application appears consistent with the purpose of the comprehensive plan. The proposed site plan conforms to all city standards. Approving the application would not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district. There's no indication that allowing the units to be individually owned would create a nuisance to life limb or property as compared to if they were rented. Under recommendation, should the hearing examiner approve this conditional use permit? The planning department recommends conditions as listed in addition to any that would be imposed by the hearing examiner. Condition number one would be to comply, construction. Would meet all building, construction and fire code requirements. Provide for adequate parking under Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty four oh sixty. Provide an approved storm drain design provided provide at, excuse me. Provide an approved storm blade drain plan prior to construction and permits being issued. And landscape per Ocean Shores seventeen fifty one hundred and show that on the plan. The subject parcel that is subdivided shall be given credit for one sewer utility assessment. Each new parcel created pursuant to the approval of this request, sure, should it be approved. Will be required to comply with the utility charge in lieu of assessment outlined in Ocean Shores. Municipal Code thirteen twenty eight oh twenty five, as well as all system development charges for each parcel based on requirements of thirteen twenty six oh sixty five. Similar conditions shall apply to the water services required to complete the project and to the ambulance utility services. To. Complete the project. And that would conclude my staff report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. I've dealt with several similar projects in Ocean Shores and these appear. Fairly straightforward, so I only have a few questions for you. I guess first. The your staff report quotes about the twenty fourteen comprehensive plan and the twenty twenty draft. Is so that draft comprehensive plan, that's not been, that's not in effect at this time?
It is in effect at this time. It has been adopted since I started writing these staff reports for this type of a subdevelopment, but I still wanted to bring the comparison between the two. Between the two documents.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then I assume that. The city staff determined that this proposal is exempt from SEPA review as minor new construction. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Just for the record. And then I know you explained this, but again, for the record, you know, my understanding is that. With these requests, you know, but for the desire to subdivide the property to allow the units to be individually owned. That these proposed three plex structures would be permitted outright on the property. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And then if I were to approve the CUPs. The applicant would still be required to apply for a short plat that would be reviewed administratively by the city.
Correct.
And then. Turning to the conditions, so just to be clear, there. A landscaping plan hasn't yet been submitted. That's something that would be required down the road.
Yeah, not at this time.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted, I might tweak that language a little bit to make that clear. And then again, because I always ask, has the comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance been amended since the application was deemed complete? In a manner that.
Not at this time, no.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. And then. Do you have any other members of city staff that would like to testify before I turn to the applicant?
No, not at this time.
Okay, and who do we have here on behalf of the applicant?
I have the applicant. Larry Butler is serving as the surveyor for the project and he's representing. Yeah, Edmund from Z Brothers Construction.
All right, Mr. Butler, let's go ahead and get you sworn in then. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Sworn, yes.
Thank you. And then you can you can go ahead and address. These are similar projects, so you can address both if you would like at this time, but. This is just your opportunity to provide any additional information that you believe that myself or members of the public would like to know before I issue a decision.
The city presented this, Mars presented this very well. I do have anything additionally to add.
Great. And then did you have a chance to review the conditions that were recommended by city staff? And would you have any issue complying with those conditions?
I have no issues complying with any of those conditions, no.
Great. And do you have any additional comments?
None at this time.
And then I I think I forgot to ask, but can you please state and spell your name for the audio recording?
Yes, it is Larry, L A R R Y, last name Butler, B U T, L E R.
And would the either applicant or any other members of the applicant team like to testify today? It's not required.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do we have any members of the public in the room that would like to testify, Mr. Reed?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. Well, I don't get to say this often, but I, you know, I've reviewed the materials and heard the testimony and I I don't believe I'm going to have any issue. Issuing a decision approving the both CUPs with the conditions recommended by city staff. And so, Mr. Reed, do you have any any last thoughts before I adjourn this hearing?
No, not at this time.
Okay, well, with that, thank you everyone for being here. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this hearing and I hope you get a chance to enjoy the rest of your day.
Great, thank you, Perrin.